Started a finance committee meeting. To begin the meeting, I would like to turn it over to our waters to review the local audit report.
Mike, that was my dog. They called me to work being at the MC.
Good evening. I believe the audit reports are just in the box. I just gave the bill now. I don't know if we want to pass those out or if you just want to listen to the presentation.
I can send you all electronic copy if you want. That'd be preferable. If he went.
Both.
Both, okay.
But you can save it to the end if you prefer to have attention.
Okay. In any event, yes, this year there's a little bit of transition in the business office and I apologize, we just got the reports to bill now. We got a PDF earlier in the day, so. The audit that we performed was for the year ending June 30th, 2017. I'm pleased to say that our opinion there, it's the first letter after table contents, it's an unqualified opinion which is also known as a clean opinion on the financial statements to the Carlington School District for the year end. I want to draw your attention to a few of the main exhibits in this report, ones that you guys make your decisions based off of throughout the year. And also point out a few footnotes and a few other things and then I'll see if anyone has any questions about what I said or anything else may be in the hot question concerning the audit. I think everybody got their report balanced, so I'll let it away. All right, the, the main exhibits I want to point out are exhibits three and exhibit five in the financial statements. These are for the, let me get your page number here. That would be page seventeen and page nineteen. These are the operations, the balance sheet and the operations for the general fund, which is the main operating fund of the school district. On page seventeen, exhibit three, you can see the balance sheet here. You can see that the total assets at the end of the year were eight point six million. While you had total liabilities of three point six million. And you had a deferred inflow of resources related to your property tax receivable of two point four million. And this resulted in your fund balance of two point five nine nine million. If you flip forward two pages to exhibit five, this shows you the summarized results of the general fund. You see that total revenues were twenty six point five million, while the total expenditures were about twenty six point seven million. This resulted in a $211,000 decrease in your fund balance. The fund balance began the year at two point eight million and ended the year at that $2,599,000. We'll take a little more detailed look at the general fund operations in a couple of moments. Another fund type that I want to draw your attention to is the food service fund. And the schedules relating to that fund began on page twenty one. On page twenty one, this is a statement of net position for the food service fund. And the assets were 623,000. While there is a deferred outflow of resources related to the pensions of one hundred and seven thousand. You had total liabilities of 772,000 and a deferred inflow related to the pensions of $4,200. Your net position in the food service fund was a negative $46,000. I do want to point out the one major item relating to that. In the food service fund, there's a small portion of your net pension liability shown on these statements. And that liability was 511,000. We'll discuss that a little more deeply in a moment. But if it wasn't for that liability which became, put on your statements three years ago, you would actually have a surplus of a little over 450,000.
And that was a state or federal requirement?
Yeah, it was a requirement by the governmental accounting standards board to sort of get the school districts in line with corporations. They started putting on fixed assets, long-term debt about fifteen years ago. And the net pension liability was just put on three years ago under Gatsby 68. And the theory is you're funding the Peasars. And this is more a matter of if Peasars went out of business and the school is responsible for all the employees you currently have and all your retired employees. This is the liability and this is just a portion of it, the 511,000 relating to your food service employees.
I'm questioning that's a bill or, Bill, could you guys comment on that? Is that a, a real number that we need to be aware of or is that an accounting?
Well, it's a real number. It's a real number calculated by the actuaries. And so that is something, that's the reason that the pension system contribution rate for employers is up at well thirty-two and a half percent this year, go to thirty-four percent next year. Or thirty-three point four-four or whatever, point eight-six percent increase. So it's a real number.
Could that exist in the food service budget but not in the?
It's in the general fund too.
It is.
It's in the government-wide statements. Your normal general fund though, it doesn't exist in there. We'll touch base and tie that together in a moment. And yes, it's an actuarial number. It's not like it's a liability that you're going to have to pay out because Peasars is actually paying out. You're funding Peasars paying it out more or less.
They're paying it out over the use, the, the actuarial, the lives of the people who are retired. Once those people, you know, meet their maker, the liability goes away.
He smiles. The, the food service fund, that was the balance sheet. Just quickly on page twenty-two is the results of the operations of the food service fund. There, basically there was a $32,000 change in a net position, a negative change in the net position in the food service fund. This brought your net position to the beginning of the year of a negative 14,000 to a negative 42,000 by the end of the year. The one thing I want to point out that related to that is 20,000 of that 32,000 relates to the change in the net pension liability that we just spoke of. So once again, instead of a $32,000 loss, it would have only been 12,000 if it wasn't for Gatsby 68 putting that pension liability on there. The final type of, uh, fund, of actual different fund in the school district financial statements is on exhibit ten on page twenty-five. This is the agency fund, which is your student activity funds in the school district. And I just want to point out there's a little over $77,000 of monies for the various student activity clubs. I briefly spoke of the main funds, the general fund, the food service fund and the student activities fund. Now, sort of tying in with this net pension liability and a couple of other things we talked of, you can see there's exhibit one, two, and exhibit four and six. Those are only government-wide. That puts all your fixed assets, any long-term debts you have, the net pension liability, all that on your financial statements. And that's more or less for your creditors and bondholders. In your case, you don't have a bond currently outstanding. But that's to put you in comparison to corporate financial statements and that's what those numbers really are about. We don't go over those in detail unless someone had a question, quite frankly, because you budget on the basis that we just spoke of when we went over these funds. Like I, like I just said, you have a long-term debt footnote, but there's no outstanding bonds in there. You just have a small compensate absences, which is for your accumulated sick days of the employees in the school district. Couple of things to point out on the footnotes. We talked about the net pension liability. There's a whole five or six pages in there discussing the actuarial assumptions behind that, how those numbers are calculated. I mean, just to give you a little bit of perspective on that. We talked about 511,000 in the food service fund, but your total net pension liability is about 43 million in the governmental-wide funds. And the 511,000 in the business-type funds. So your total net pension liability is 43.5 million. Once again, that is not a liability you're currently paying on. You're funding Peasars who are paying on that liability. The other one to point out is the OPEB liability, very similar. This is the actuary who prepares this. And that number's 6.9 million at the end of the year. There's also a footnote describing that. That was new this year as far as under Gatsby 75. Carlington School District chose to early implement for June 30th, 2017. Because it gave you a discount in the actuarial report. They have it done a year early based on the report being required for every few years. So some of those things sort of distort the numbers on exhibits one and two is, you know, why we don't really look at them too closely. So the next section I wanted to sort of get into is we talked about the general fund briefly on a very summarized basis. I just wanted to point out after the footnotes, there's a budget actual analysis of the general fund. And let me get your page number and just draw your attention to one item on there. On page fifty-seven, this is the total, total bottom line, let's call it, of this analysis. Basically, your budget, budget for 983,000 of your general fund, fund balance to be used. You only used in reality 211,000 in the sixteen-seventeen school year. So you had a positive budget versus actual overall of about 771,000. Approximately, well, approximately 400 of that 771,000 was because of expenditures coming in lower than budget expenditures. And the resulting amount would may basically be relating to the revenues exceeding the budgeted amounts. The final thing I want to just talk about a little bit is there was a single audit performed along with the financial statements. Whenever you've expended 750,000 in federal monies, you're required to have a single audit. And that's something we do as part of our audit. The back of the report has a schedule detailing all your federal expenditures and everything of that nature. You guys actually spent about 1,589,000 in federal monies. And, uh, we, we have to test programs based on criteria. And this year we tested the child nutrition cluster, which is your national school lunch, breakfast and dinner and commodities programs. And pleased to say we were able to, you know, provide also, there's a clean opinion on that. There was no findings or question costs relating to anything in the food service fund or anything else that came to our attention relating to the federal expenditure of monies at the district. So that's just a very brief review of the financial statements. I know you guys just received them right now as I was going through them. I don't know if anything I said or anything you may have had a question about relating to them.
That food service fund loss probably didn't relate to last year. I assume last year it was a loss.
Uh, yes, you've, you've experienced losses the last few years. Now, part of that is that net pension liability the last three years. But as far as the, there's not a comparison of that schedule right in this report. But Carlington's experienced, two years ago you had a larger loss. And then last year and this past year, you know, it's been in that five to $20,000 range before that net pension liability change. You do have a guarantee with your food service company and that is met usually where they will reimburse you money for that. But the key there is there's terms in that agreement where, you know, you may see that you have a $12,000 loss. But the way they are responsible for certain costs, some costs they are not responsible for, it may even be a profit or break even to them. That's why it may look a little bit different. I know we've worked with the superintendent in the past with that a couple of years ago when we had some questions. So this is fairly consistent for Carlington's results from food service last few years.
So it is consistent. Is it consistent with other schools?
Uh, food service is very hard to compare because a lot of schools don't capture all the cost in their food service fund. There's a lot of schools, they'll show you a positive result from the food service fund. However, they're not charging all the employee benefits, maybe utilities, different things to the food service fund. In general, a school's food service fund is not going to be a positive thing for the school unless you're in a district where you're getting the extreme amount of federal funding. Or you have all the kids reading for free, then you get so many subsidies and everything. But usually when you take into account all the costs, especially with retirement and everything like that, they're usually money losers. It's just a matter of how much you show. And some schools will transfer money to, from the general fund at the end of the year to make it look like a break even in the food service. So you really got to watch what you're looking at with that.
If I could ask, piggyback on his question, his first question, operationally, the food service program was in the red or the black?
It suffered a $12,000 loss. And, you know, it gets a little distorted with that additional 20,000 with the net pension liability change like I mentioned. But it did have a $12,000 loss in actual amounts, yes.
Bill, to me that was part of that because of the freeze that we replaced or was that?
That'll be in this year's question. Although that'll have to be capitalized, appreciated over due to life.
Any other questions?
I will send these out electronically to everybody, so they can read.
No. It's been around a long time and very reputable and their reports are generally spot on. I'm glad John has said.
Thank you. I know it was last minute. If you guys do have any questions, come up after looking at them. If you could direct them to Bill and he'll forward them to me and we'll make sure we get you any answers to any questions you may have.
Thank you.
All right. Good evening.
At this point, Mr. Riley, we discuss the.
As a follow-up, and this, what he had his certified me when I gave you the budget reports last month. This is taking some numbers from the financial records. And what I was doing with these is I wanted, in working forward, I wanted to compare the budget number with the actual number to see the accuracy of the budget. And this was, purpose of doing this was so that in moving forward, I would know how to budget for the next fiscal year. So I don't want to spend a lot of time on this at this point in time. But what you see on here is, what I highlighted in yellow is specifically showing you where there was a big variance. And again, anything that's in red is a variance negatively, anything that's in black is a positive variance. So if you're looking at, this is just a comparison of the final budget that you had for last year versus the year-to-date expenditures. And these are all based on the, you sort of follow up into the audit. And if you, some of the things that, that sort of bothered me were the differences on things that you know you're going to have expenditures. So if you go to page two and you'll see up there is the next, the first highlighted yellow, where you're looking at regular program to special program. It was under budgeted by, you know, 83,000 with 62,000 respectively. These are things that occur every year in terms of these tuition charges from either, most of it's going to be on the IU. I, I'm sure this just did materialize in one year. Taking a look at one that, one that I found really bothersome, this is to go to page three and you'll see 1,200 to 500. It's only off by a half million dollars. The point being that this isn't the first time we've spent this kind of money in these areas, whether it be for, you know, regular tuition or special education, charter schools primarily. And, and this should be accounted for. Unfortunately, in your budget overall, there was a lot of money extra. And you'll see it if you look underneath the 200s. The way I did this is I did 100 for salaries, 200 for benefits, 300 for contracted special services, 400 is maintenance services, contracted maintenance services. 500 is basically transportation to insurance programs. And when I say insurance, I'm talking about your fire liability, which is like a fringe benefit. And, and six of them are your expenses. So what I'm trying to do and is realign the budget so that, that the dollars that are being budgeted are budgeted in the area where you're spending it. As opposed to the areas that is not being spent. So fortunately, the budget itself overall had enough money to cover everything in terms of the spending. But it wasn't lined up of where you're actually spending money. And so that's what this whole analysis was for, and I'm sure now, again, this is more detailed than you'd probably like to see, but this is what I need to start with in order to put a bunch together. So this tells me where, where I need to go and, and everything. So not taking any more time on that if anybody has any questions. I think I highlighted, you know, I'd say the red numbers are your negative. The ones that concern me are the ones I highlighted in yellow. Moving on to.
Bill, just, just a question. Any of the really big numbers like the 1,200, 500 that you, the half a million dollars? Are you going to go back and just do some quick forensics to, to ask?
I've already looked at these numbers. I just really need to get that.
But like, what was it last year? Did we under budget last year? Was it a one-time gotcha or is it true?
No, it's not a one-time gotcha. Not at all. Any other questions? Does this, does this next piece of PDF deck on the same thing? I use the same beginning of the spreadsheet here and then expand on going forward to the eighteen, nineteen budget. So any questions?
Just the last one. That 500 range, what was, what was, what was under?
Was that 1,100 or 1,200?
1,200.
And special education that you're getting, you're paying all these services for. And a lot of that comes out of the charge schools, because there's a certain amount of charge schools getting. Actually, I don't know if I can tell you, but that's who we're spending the money for. I think this, this is, this is ongoing.
We budgeted 217,000. We spent 780,000.
Yes.
These are your out-of-dish replacements. These are students that I've said before that move into the dish requiring provisions of their IU that we can't provide here such as partial hospitalization, mental health services. That's at 1,200 and 500 code.
So is this something that, I don't know if you could look at past budgets, like years past? Is it something that's been consistently on budget?
I'll give you that answer to make sure.
I'm just curious.
I've done a little bit of analysis the last couple of years, looking at where things are at, where we're going with it, and kind of get an idea budget-wise for next moving forward. Consistently, we were studying around in that special ed overall, we spent about a million consistently, give or take a couple of hundred thousand here and there. So it's been consistently leveled. We are making steady increases though due to the students we do have enrolling. So I envision a, a lot of them are 200,000 increases up every year. So it's been a slow steady increase, but it's been pretty consistent.
Right.
So I envision, I'm not putting, I'm putting my budget together now, but kind of get an idea of where we're moving based on the students we have and what we're anticipating.
But you're talking about actual expenditures. I was asking about, what had been budgeted for that and what the difference between?
I'll have to get you that.
Yeah, I'm just curious. I mean, three or two.
The way it was budgeted, had been budgeted was that it was an overall umbrella and it wasn't attributed to the digitalized accountant codes. So you break it down even further.
This, this is within the 1,200s. I think what you're asking goes back to years. I'd have to get you a specific answer. My, my reaction is it hasn't been changed because what I've noticed is with the exception of 100, 200 wages and fringe benefits. It was basically played against and.
Okay. It's part of it, yeah.
And, and I'm sure there's some exceptions in there. In other words, it was unorder filed, so to speak. It's a little way to think of it. So instead of doing any kind of detailed analysis. And I've already got your special education budget. Not really. This is taking a look at, I usually want you to have this. Is because going forward, the school district has to, um, have the, underneath index one of 2006. The school district budget has to be available for public inspection by January 25th. And what you're looking at here is, what I'm trying to do with this is take the information that we have so far. And again, the first columns match up with what I gave you on the portrait sheet. And I just use that to build going forward the budget for eighteen, nineteen. So I, I added the column dealing with the final budget for seventeen, eighteen. And I think the thing that, if you look at past, anything that goes, it starts on the second page. When you start with 1,100, 300, go down that column, it's a mirror image of what it was the prior year. So that sort of answers your question, you know, about, about what you asked. I, I'd want to go back and check on the ones to be sure what's going on. But in fairness here, preliminary budget, and that's what I inherited when I got here in Bay. And so my predecessor may not have had a chance to go in there and work on it because he was off study in April. So he may have gone in and changed numbers. So I don't want to just say that nothing would have been changed. But it, but what we put together and we adopted, we'd be in the board, and when I presented to the board, was what was in the preliminary budget in a lot of those categories. The areas I concentrated on with 100, 200, 300 was, that's, you know, sixty-something percent, seventy percent of your expenditures, seventy-something percent of your expenditures. Going forward with this, and let's just go to the last page because I think that's going to be the easiest one to look at. You'll see there's some numbers and some notes on the last page. And I think this is what you need to sort of zero in on. If I went down and did everything with, the first two categories I just did, three percent increase of less quarter to 100s and 200s. That has to be looked at detailed to make sure it's correct. But if they're doing a preliminary budget, that's, that's going to work to get down there. So why would that, uh, 2006? But when I took a look at that, I was concerned about, and you'll notice that that's where my actual money was. There was at least a half million dollars underneath the, tucked over underneath the 200 category in the budget from the, from the sixteen, seventeen school year. I took and, and look at, if you look at what the total is above the red comments, it's 28,000, 725. And if you look at what the total is after I adjusted it for what I consider extra money, it's 28,500,000 dollars. So there's actually, what you're looking at is, I think a more realistic increase is 830,000 rather than the million dollar increase that I, that I have to show up above by just using straight numbers across. I did adjust a lot of the other numbers that I thought were, were realistic at like three, four, five, six hundred. I wanted to make the numbers more decisive what you're actually spending. So the budget will be more reflective of what, where you're headed. Am I giving you too much? I love that. So, so wherever you, wherever you see the, the green highlight, and it's on the second page as well, I'm trying to, you know, please focus your attention to those particular places and where the adjustments were made. Now, this is what I want to go ahead and this is what I'm going to use as a base to start this. I'm probably going to have to tweak it once I go out and put it on the state budget board. But the object here is to come up with the budget that you, the ability to levy the maximum tax increase, but then you can make that decision later on, what you're going to do when you get to that age in general.
Don't we need to pass a motion tonight acknowledging that we're either going to stick to the index or?
Have we want to have the option?
No, you don't have to pass a motion. The only, the reason for the motion and especially if you're going to be on this, is if you don't want to exceed the index. So you would pass a motion so you don't have to go through a lot of gyrations of doing the preliminary budget. If you're going to exceed the index, if you want that option to exceed the index, then I think you need to do that.
Oh, we need to.
Then we just do the preliminary budget. So you don't have to do a vote. You'll, because this year is not a presidential election year and the primaries in May instead of April. You'll be able to adopt the budget on the schedule in February, February.
Got you, okay.
And I'll get the specific dates out on that, everybody. You may have to do it at the, at a first meeting, so we'll have to take a look at that.
But there is only one meeting, so.
That's right. This, this is the only public meeting in January.
No, no, no.
February, yeah, you're the one in February.
But we should find out tonight before we leave.
I can get that for you. I have the schedule in my office.
Because we need to make the motion tonight.
I'll do that. Take that. So I don't expect you to sort all this. I'm just trying to, trying to see the highlights and give you the information. Anybody has any questions, just give me a call or email me. I mean, this is, you know, like I say, I'm trying to put the budget together for eighteen, nineteen based on how you're actually spending the money. So there wasn't anything wrong with the budget to pass in terms of the total dollars you had budgeted. It was more how the money was allocated within those total dollars.
And for the new board member, we're forced to do this every year. We have to make a declaration that is tied to our tax increase or a potential tax increase for the year. We don't have to pass a final budget. Preliminary budget in May.
Preliminary proposed, I think it is. We do have a proposal. Proposed preliminary budget, okay.
Well, this, this is the, this is the proposed preliminary one. I think that's going to be out.
And they stuck that proposed.
The other one's a proposed budget in May and then the final budget in June.
That's the final budget.
Yeah, it's a.
Uh, June 30th.
So it's, it's expected that there might be a lot of changes between May, but we have to draw a lot of the sand to put something down and allow for, for discourse, so.
Well, but.
Okay. And that concludes our finance committee meeting for this month.
January 16th, 2018, meeting of the Carlington School District Board of Directors is called to order. Bill, can you do the question?
I believe in the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Will the secretary please call the roll?
Director Apple.
Here.
Director Mendoza.
She's not able to be here.
Director Duvan.
She's not able to be here.
Director Honsar.
Yes.
Director O'Brien.
She's not able to be here.
Director Sensi.
Here.
Director Zludski?
Here.
Director Richardson?
He's not able to be here.
Director Sodder?
Here. There's a moment, at the beginning of each meeting, we allow the public to ask any questions or comment on anything that's on their agenda for tonight. Does anybody in the audience have anything they'd like to address or ask about an agenda item? If not, we'll move on. I understand that we have some kind of special reception, Dr. Piper. So I'll turn this over to you.
Thank you. Every January is a school appreciation month, and as a token of all the time and hours that the board puts in, we do have a reception. The public is welcome to partake in that as well. However, prior to that, we'd like to take the board up to the former library to see the creative space and what are the ways we're transforming learning spaces to provide different learning opportunities for kids. So if we can take a moment, and again, the public's welcome to come up as well, we can go up to the library and take a look at the creative shop.
So you want to go upstairs first and then come down and eat?
Yes.
Okay. So this is your chance. You come to a board meeting, it's boring. Please come join us for food. We'll go upstairs and look at the new library creative space and then come back downstairs and you can have a quick bite to eat with us.
This is a pre-opening, and we're very excited to have you here because I want to first take the time to thank Ms. Bag, Ms. Steiner, Ms. Rowley, and a whole team of people that have been going after this for about six months and even before them drawing up the plans for it. And we are extremely excited with how the field came. And I was watching your faces as you walked in. It was refreshing to see everybody's reaction. One of the things I want to pull you back to the back and then I'll let Ms. Steiner and Ms. Bag talk about some of the stations. So one of the things about our school in particular, in our district, is the relationships that the teachers have with kids in the school community. And one of the things, we wanted to build upon our strength to meet our needs. So we are most proud of our kids. And that's why, if you notice the sign, it says one hundred percent student made. Because everything that goes on in here will be done by the students as they explore different ideas in the different stations. And one of the things that we've really been working hard for at all different levels is the mentoring piece and the component in the building. So we saw a need for preparing our students to become entrepreneurs in the next level. And this field here is this is a place where you can receive, you can explore a lot of things and also get the guidance as you're exploring those topics. So we thought putting a sign that mentoring tomorrow's entrepreneurs would fit in well. And I know that I'm missing a couple things, so I'm going to defer to Ms. Steiner and Ms. Bag to help me out with that.
I think the entrepreneur aspect is what is different about what we're doing here at Carleton. A lot of schools are converting their former media spaces into maker spaces. But I think what we're doing that's different is we're going one step beyond, and that's bringing in the community with this entrepreneurial side of it. So the thought is that the kids are in here and not just playing around with the equipment, which they will be doing, but also it's purposeful play in a way. So if they have an idea, they come in, they can experiment, work on things, develop something, a product, and then the idea is then to produce it and market it and sell it. So whether we do something with Etsy, with some of our jewelry making that they'll have in the jewelry making station, or over in the t-shirt press, our thought is that, you know, things like when we have homecoming t-shirts, the kids will do the design, they will market it, they will sell it, they will fill the orders, all of those types of things. They also have equipment that can do binding for reports. So maybe some of the reports you get at the board will eventually be, have been put together and sealed and delivered by our students. So tying in some real world job skills in here in addition to giving them experience with hands-on, touching some of these tools, connecting with business leaders in the community who will come in and run workshops for our kids. That's, I think, is what we're doing that I haven't seen in any of the other districts around here.
So we just staged a couple things, so we're just still opening the boxes. But back here, eventually you're going to see a mounted screen TV. This is the gaming center. So initially, obviously, we know kids know how to do gaming, and it's very limited to what games that they could use. Obviously, it has to be school appropriate. But our goal is to get them to go to that next step and actually start producing their own games, start getting to that level, and then have other kids play their games. And who knows where they could take that. We do have somebody who's very interested in bringing back future, is it future business leaders. We took a beat in that all the time, so we're trying to get a tie-in with that. So while a student may not be somebody that wants to do some of the hands-on stuff here, they might be the ones that are doing the marketing and actually selling things outside of the school as well as within the school itself. So some bare bone stuff, we had a request for, from some students for Lego. So we're kind of building together to the Legos station. We had done this before when Wendy and I had noticed that shoe carnival, I think it was, was going on. So we went and took everything that they could give us from that.
It was like ten dollars.
We could glue the bases of Lego on there so they can do different levels of Lego. And then hopefully next year, some of them, we'll then put the circuits in them and start making it more movable. So each year, we're hoping to take it up a notch. Over here, just we have some like build-it station, we're kind of calling it, which is, people have donated stuff. There's a bunch of catapults over here. We also have board games that are in that station there. It's all scuffed up on that table. We put some felt on it. But kids can come, during study halls, play chess, they can play, we're getting backgammon, just different games, just stuff to keep them doing the critical thinking as opposed to just sitting in a study hall on the stage of music, you know. We did create a little bit of a reading nook here. It's bare bones, but we're developing it, trying to figure out how we could do that. I know that the STEAM class has put together, what is it?
Living walls.
The living walls. So we will have living walls put on there to kind of create a little bit of a divider. So we're kind of thankful for that. The biggest part in here, this would be the shop part, and it's a bunch of different things. It's where kids can repurpose items that are already there. They could create something of their own. This is kind of like a wood shop, closest thing we have to that. There's no tools in here yet because there's nobody in here yet, so we can't just trust that. Over here, silver entrepreneur, we have the vinyl cutting machine that we got, we have a button maker. And then we have, what donated to us was the silk screening and the t-shirt press. So we're going to get all those parts. We've actually had some students in here helping us put some of this stuff together. So they're already starting to buy into the vibe a little bit. Amazing enough, some people weren't really excited about it, but we've had more interest recently in the train platform. We've had more kids asking us, is that where the trains go? Just tons of questions about the model trains. So we're going to let them set it up, and then we're going to hit them next year with, we need you to model, we would like to see the community, like scale your community, reconstruct it on there and have this train system going through that. So obviously, that'd be a longer project there. But then our next step, hopefully by the end of the year, if you look at the back here, where the green room is, that, we had a request from a student to get animation software. So we are going to get that and have a designated computer for that. But initially right there, there were three desks with two chairs. We're going to get some laptops for them. Down the road, a hardy recuper den, so that kids can come up here and study as well. There's some whiteboards being mounted there. And on the other side is what they're patiently waiting for. This whole area over here is called the studio, because there'll be a lot of hard work going on. But we're actually putting a huge sound studio in there where kids can record and.
Yeah, originally, when I went to Adam, there are recording studios that you can buy that you just assemble. They come in pieces. But the biggest one that I saw could maybe only fit, I would say, two kids with maybe a table. And so our thought was, you know, well, what if Mr. Obadowski wanted to bring up several kids with instruments and have them record? Or what if Mrs. Shannett wanted to bring up like the girls' ensemble? They couldn't fit in this tiny little space. So the thought was, if we repurpose that whole room and make that whole room a recording studio, then you can have kids in there playing instruments, singing. We were thinking about doing podcasts. I was talking to Mrs. Racinco, and she thought, well, her junior high kids could do podcasts in Spanish, profile the country. We could put that on our website. You know, the idea is if we have more space, you could have more opportunities in there for the kids. So that's what they are waiting for. So we of course have kids that want to sing. We have kids that want to play instruments in there, but it can be used in so many different ways. We were even thinking the ESL teacher, her and I were talking about having her kids do the morning announcements in their native language that you could also link to the website. Because that will just help that connect to the community too. A lot of our parents of ESL students, you know, they feel kind of lost about what's going on. But if they can press the button in here, you know, our morning announcements read in Arabic, or special announcements read in their home language, that that would bridge that gap for some of our parents, so.
Do you have any idea when that room is going to be?
Nope, I don't. Hey, we're going for it. We want it by June. Yes. Yeah. We are cracking the whip in here.
So what's the general feel when you come into the space?
Do I miss the one?
Well, so do we. So during this time of budgeting, what we would like, maybe you guys to explore, the option of maybe a librarian aide. Because if we had an aide in here all day long, we could pull some more of the books out. They could be checked in and out. Our biggest problem is, how do you check the books in and out? So in going through this, primarily, most of the stuff in the library was social studies and English-based. Since we had to hand put all of the books from the library back in there, her and I were looking online. I happen to be social studies, she's in English. And as I say, there's, I would have to say, good half of the books, we don't need them anymore. We don't need them for my subject for sure. They're just either outdated or we have better resources online now. Now, there's still another other half. A large portion of that is the fiction. And we'd love to get some of that stuff out. So, you know, maybe, like as you guys are looking at, if there's a way that we could do that. Yeah, as you said, it's weird that we put that little plug in there, but that, in our bigger view, obviously, this is the thing that attracts the kids to come in and hands-on. But if you have stuff, books and things like that that are related to those subjects that are around, the studies have shown kids are starting to then look at that kind of stuff, so.
One of the things that I want to reemphasize is, this is a fluid space, meaning that it will change depending upon the student's passion. So she mentioned the animation there. That was because Junior has a passion for it. Photography will probably be put in as well.
Study halls. Like study hall, lunch, like during homeroom, you know, where, and then for one hour after school. That's why we're thinking of pulling the recuper den up here, because then you will have a dedicated teacher here four days a week. Fridays, it might not be open after school, but kids have a lot of activities after school on Fridays. But at least for four days, we know it would be manned up here that somebody could come up. So, and we were hoping to do the workshops then too, after school. So if somebody is really interested in something, you know, if you're really interested in silk screening, and we have somebody coming up, they would come two fifteen to three fifteen because we have the bus, kids can get home. And then, you know, some of these things Wendy didn't mention, but she might have mentioned other things before, that you're going to have to go through a little bit of a testing process before we let you use that equipment. You know, you can't just come up and be like, oh, I want to go in the recording studio and play with this. You know, it's broken. Like, you're going, there's going to be some stuff like that. But once a student is, has shown that they're able to use the equipment safely, absolutely, it's, go for it. We were talking about, I think the biggest challenge is going to be, unfortunately, and I guess I can say this as an educator, one of the things that education has done has sucked the life out of learning with all of the testing. You look at kids back at preschool, and as Wendy likes to say, they're all full of unstructured play. And they come up and they'll put things together. And then all of a sudden, they get up here and they're so afraid to like move outside of any lines, you know. And that's going to be the hardest part, is when they're coming in here and they expect us to tell them, how do you do this? And you're like, I don't know how to just do it. You know, so I think as that shift comes, we think it'll take about eighteen months to really get the culture to change, and some of the teachers. I mean, this could be a big change for some of our teachers, that you're just going to let them go. You know, that's going to be like a freak out for some. So hopefully, I'd say probably about fifty percent will be easy with it, and we'll pull the other fifty with us. But it's pretty exciting. Yes. 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 Immediately, this will work. The gaming, you'll get them. And then that brings them all the way across, you know what I mean? So then they're like seeing different stuff that, oh gosh, we didn't even mention. How about, I guess you guys knew that was sewing. It was like, yeah, I was like, we like went by the big table. I didn't even mention that.
I think the idea too is that we're going to try to model after Apple where they do the badging system, where you earn badges. So that's the thought, is that you would come in, you would earn a badge. So we know, okay, I have the sewing badge. I know, I don't need to watch you. You can just come in and get on the sewing machine. And then eventually, you become good enough that you become what we call like a student leader. So then now you come in and you can help kids that are coming in. You could work with it after school or if they bring up some elementary kids. Because the thought is that this could be a destination for the elementary, you know, bring some kids up, and then we have our student leaders run activities in all of the different stations for the kids so that they can get their hands on some of this equipment too.
Is there a way to have some kind of formal but controlled way to get all the kids to come through here and tour it? And some of you give ideas of what can happen. You've had a couple of those kids that are already.
Yes, I am rolling that out. We were thinking about doing it with the English classes and bringing them in into small groups, taking them on a tour. And then I was thinking of having maybe an interest sheet at every station. If you're interested, put your name down. And then, you know, when we do a training, then we reach out to those kids. But that was the thought, is that bring them in in small groups, explain all the different stations and the options here for them, and then, you know, get the excitement up. I mean, they're trying to peek in and everything like that. So I feel like the excitement's going and in the building.
When we have our skin gear going, they sew, we have the class that we're telling them, we have the wood, the garden paper, the science that would come from work, the woodworking, and those kids are still off here.
Yeah, oh yeah. That's what we need to learn. We do want to show you, we have a couple more things. So out primes, I could pass this around. We just approved the signage board. So they're going to do like, it's a sticker?
It's a sticker, but it looks like etch.
Etch glass. And then underneath it, it's going to say ideas that work. So when you look at that big glass window, you're going to see that it looks like the gears are happening there. And.
You can still see the shop.
So kind of like brings you in. The studio is, you'll look like this, across these glasses, you have the.
Those like soundbars.
And then this is our favorite, on that, it's operating in there. So these two poles here, we're going to play, these are. So those are the last two pieces. I'm going to just kind of a fairer than the stuff. I think it should. It should bring them in, we hope. We'll drive them in. So.
And you had also mentioned earlier though, as well, about having like an open house type reception, maybe come May, when some of the kids have had a chance to get in, get certified in the different areas and start producing, because that would be a great way for our students but also community members to see what our kids are doing up here and hopefully maybe get more interest from the community in and saying, hey, I know how to do that, or I know somebody who knows how to do that. Could I give you their information? And they could come in and they could do a workshop with your kids. Absolutely, that's what we want to see.
Now, we would give our pipe dream. So if we get the books back out, that room back there is a pretty big room in the back where you saw all this. And there's two little rooms here that we're using for what, ESL and?
And hearing support right now.
That we would actually convert them into rooms that could be used for students with put glass in there. And then Wendy could tell you her big dream for the big space.
I want an aquaponics lab in the bathroom back there where we could do like a food lab, where we could explore like the indoor growing. Yeah, well, yeah. Or we could use grow lights. They're converting warehouses into Chicago into indoor farms. But this idea of, you know, we're doing the trap in the classroom, kind of combining that with the aquaponics, growing food that we could, you know, contribute to the cafeteria. So that would be what I would, so that's our, that is my pipe dream.
Play one. Answer your question. Clean, crisp, fresh, exciting, potential, live opportunity. That's what I saw.
Yeah, very inviting.
There's a couple random pieces of furniture we haven't moved yet, but we figured you guys could look around.
The majority of the furniture here is all donated from DNC that we were able to get, which is remarkable, except for the, it's a mixture of both, but a lot of it is a.
We still have to put in our big, like a big work table here for our kids as well, but if they could just solve this, I would. but if they could just solve those, I would, I think it'd be good.
Was intriguing, interesting, you said that the community's actually growing. Uh, Mr. Canty was out, set up a meeting, uh, just last week with, I think, called the consortium for stealing Mrs. Gifford's school board thunders, I'm sorry.
Cheese.
So, we gotta have a partnership with FedEx, PNC, and UPMC. And, uh, they're coming in four times for our seniors only this spring, and working with them. And we came up and had them come up, take a peek at this, and they were, they were ecstatic, um, and, and just saw the things coming together, uh, with that.
And related to, you see the article that Greg Bear wrote in the paper about deeper learning and not testing and not, but experimental stuff that he's averaging, and people are advocating for a different kind of learning. You guys should reach out to him and say, "Hey, we've got started. Help us give us feedback."
So, yeah. And, and that's something that we, we're, that, uh, wanna close on. This space is combining two schools of thought. One school of thought is exactly what Mr. Bear wrote in the article that you summarized. And another is, uh, I think it's the Allegheny Conference, uh, and their, theirs is, we're going to have a labor shortage in Allegheny County. And this, we're looking at this as an opportunity to have the children experience something, and have the lessons taught about that experience. If you're gonna start it, we're gonna push, and we're gonna mentor you all the way until you complete it. And then, ideally, you're going to be giving back to the community with the product that you're doing, that you're passionate about. Thus tying in our three.
How about if Javi combined once a month, where one of the skilled people had to do a workshop around a certain topic in here, and skilled people bringing our kids in and excited.
No, I think, I think Dr. Cuff would be very interested in that, you know, just even as, like, a way to open up possibilities out that way.
So we want to thank you for having your faith in us, and we go after this with Dr. Piper as well, for giving us the green light and go after this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice, Carnegie's December Students of the Month. Word of the month was caring. These students were all nominated, uh, by their classroom teacher, along with other nominees from their grade level. Um, each teacher presents their nominee, and then the grade level department, um, chooses a student of the month to be recognized. So it's pretty, it's a pretty big deal. They should be very proud of themselves. Um, so I'm going to very quickly just announce their names, so they could come up, be recognized, and, um, receive their certificate. So our first recipient is from Mrs. Garrison's kindergarten class, and that's Raylan Wyll. From Mrs. Rakovsky's class, we have Haley McNeil. Unfortunately, she is not here, so she'll receive her certificate tomorrow. From Mr. Alexander's second grade class, we have Emily Babish. From Mrs. Marglowsky's third grade class, Joey, oh, I'm sorry, Zoe Harris. Come on down, Zoe. And from Mrs. Lewis's fourth grade class, this is a pretty exciting moment for the Babish family, because we have her sister Amelia Babish. So come on up, girlfriend. Our fifth grade recipient isn't here. She is from Mrs. Gadas's class, and that's, um, Jalela Seaton. So she'll receive her award tomorrow. And our sixth grade recipient is from Mrs. Bevan's class, and it's Brianna Most. Come, come on up, Brianna. So I'm just gonna say it one more time. It's pretty, um, impressive to get this, this nomination from your homeroom, and then to have the other classroom teachers in the grade level say, "Yes, this is the person to have this award," is pretty awesome. So I'm gonna have everybody turn their awards around, so parents can get pictures. So turn your awards, so everybody can see. And then you're gonna all turn around, so that the board can recognize you and give you a big round of applause. Special thank you to our parents. I know that the, the weather didn't cooperate with us tonight. Thank you for coming out. Um, I appreciate it. Carnegie appreciates your support. So thank you. Great job, guys.
Thank you, everyone. And if your parents allow you, feel free to grab a cookie on the way out. There's plenty of cookies left.
Or some celery.
All right, if everyone's ready, we'll continue with the meeting. Board members, you good? All five of us, all right? Um, so after the appreciation, again, I apologize for the delay. So in the future, anyone, feel free to interrupt us and remind us of bigger contextual issues happening. Um, I'll entertain a motion to employ Chris Juswick for the position of Director of Financial Affairs and Budget.
So move.
A, thank you, a twelve-month position under the terms of the contract agreement, at a starting salary of eighty-two thousand dollars, effective February first, twenty-eighteen through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one. I believe I have a motion. Thank you very much.
Second.
Thank you very much. Any discussion? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
All right.
Looking forward to it.
Fairly traveled. I can just say, um, Chris, we greatly appreciate and welcome you here. Uh, we took a long time for the departure of our former business manager, and Bill Riley came on and really helped us have some fresh eyes in the department, and help us assess what some of our meetings are. And through that, we took a look at what demands of the position would be, and the types of qualities of candidates we wanted to have. And we were very excited with your presentation. Uh, you went above and beyond in your presentation, adding different articles, making things relevant, it told the story of the numbers. And, uh, we're looking forward to great things from you, and I think you're gonna be a perfect fit with Ed, Rachel, Lauren, Ashley, Dennis, uh, the board, everybody else in the admin team, Rachel might lock in as well. And it's gonna be exciting. So welcome, and we'll get you qualified to pull a few short.
So moving along, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the December fourth, twenty-seventeen reorganization meeting, and the minutes of the December fourth regular voting meeting, as presented. I sent a motion.
I sent it.
Move by the second. Move by the second. Any discussion? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries. Under reports, I'll report that we had an executive session prior to this meeting, where we discussed personnel, student, and real estate matters. I'll now turn to Dr. Piper for administrative reports.
Thank you. And I want to remind the board, you know, this is a new format that we're undertaking for our meetings. We've been having longer executive sessions, so we can really delve more into some issues regarding the personnel, property, contracts, and legislative issues that may affect the district, where sometimes we would be rushed and really run out of time. And I want to be sure the board has enough time to examine things, talk about them. It's hard to do it sometimes in an hour and a half. Uh, having said that, you know, we're also making adjustments to how these once-a-month public meetings go, uh, and we'll see what's the effective way to do it, and how we give presentations and reports and so forth. But as we began tonight, you saw, we led off with the finance committee meeting, where we could do that second public meeting each month. We'll do that for every public meeting. So typically, because we're only having one meeting, we're gonna start them at seven, and then we're going to begin the finance committee meeting at six-thirty. And should there be things we need to tidy up, like talking about technology, hiring the district, whether it's in-house or out-of-house, we'll set aside some time for the six-thirty session. Today was unique with, not only is the first time in January doing it, but we're getting socked. You know, when I was at the fore looking at the weather this morning, this wasn't predicted. So, you know, my phone's been ringing from our colleague superintendent and executive director Parkway. Uh, so it's, you can't win. So, it's one of those things, and, you know, I know some people had some tough time getting in, because the roads were dicey. Uh, and I appreciate everybody's, uh, coming out to speak tonight. The other thing I wanted to mention as part of our reports is, we received word from Department of Ed. Uh, we're very proud that Carleton, once again, uh, has received a distinguished title of a distinguished Title I school from the Division of Federal Programs. And only a hundred and twenty-one Title I schools were named distinguished schools based on the criterion of high progress reward and high achievement. So it's only schools that are highest, five percent of Title I schools, based on these areas in English, Latin, and Arts, and Math, uh, could be considered. So, you know, once again, I think Carnegie's staff is really student-centered, uses data well. I think Lauren, with your leadership, you've really stepped in for a fine chain of administrators, John and Carlin. And I think the kids respond to it. They respond to high expectations, they respond to structure. Uh, and, you know, you see all the parents that came out in this weather for tonight, and that's saying a lot. So I want to commend you and your staff, I want to commend Lisa Raleigh, and this is no small thing. And there will be, and I'm not sure when the, uh, when this, right, what, what the conference is, because the Title I conference used to be, uh, it used to be in seven springs. So you would have to go there all the time. Once in a while, they would have it down at Station Square, but I, I don't know where it is. But what I do know, Carnegie's gonna be acknowledged. So we'll send a team to that to be sure. Uh, and that's just an example of great work, uh, people are doing in this district. So I want to thank you, and thank you, team, everyone. I want to be sure. Briefly, I want to turn, uh, a minute over to, uh, Mr. Mantis, touch base on the NAAT exam, which is coming up on the thirty-first.
Thanks, Dr. Piper. I just want to be very brief. Uh, to remind the board that, uh, on January thirty-first, we'll be giving the NAAT test to the eighth graders, the National Report Card test. Uh, we have all the logistics in place. Forty-six eighth graders will be taking the science test this year, and it's gonna be given in two, uh, separate, uh, sessions, one in the morning and one in the afternoon. And, uh, it's a computer test, so there, you know, we don't have to worry about paper pens or anything like that. But I wanted to bring your attention that that is coming up, uh, on the thirty-first. And, uh, one of the stipulations that they gave us, um, is that we make sure that we have ninety percent participation for this particular test. If not, we gotta do it over. So, you know, we have a plan in place where we're gonna, you know, have a meeting on the twenty-ninth of January at home for those forty-six kids, and, um, we're gonna encourage them to do the best at that particular point in time.
Were those forty-six kids selected randomly?
They were selected at random.
Because there's a hundred.
Yeah. So I, I had to submit the entire eighth grade class, and they, um, they selected fifty at the beginning, then we had a few kids transfer out. They picked a couple more, and it ended up with forty-six. So we have to make sure we have ninety percent of those kids take the test. If not, we have to do it again, you know, later on in the year.
But again, and just the stress, we're selected. We don't have an option.
No.
Participate or not.
No, no, that, we were, we were selected to do so. For the second year in a row, by the way.
Right.
Carnegie did the, fourth graders did the math and English last year. We're gonna do the science for the eighth graders this year. Okay?
And in thirty seconds, we have a new board member. Can you quickly explain what NAAT is?
NAAT is the, the test that they, they call the National Report Card. That's where they, they sample kids from all across the country in math, science, and, um, English Language Arts. And they all take the same test, uh, and that's kind of, we get, the nation gets graded, if you're honest. So that's kind of what it is. So, again, it was, we, we're selected, and we do what we gotta do.
You did a good job last year. They're like, gonna let you do it again.
I asked them that, but, uh, I said, "Please don't pick us for three in a row," but that's the way it is. So, yes.
Is there a reason why they scheduled this in the winter, uh, when you have to have ninety percent participation? It seems like, uh, you know, with storms and so forth, that could cost a lot.
It's always in the second semester. Like, last year, they did, it was, I think we were in March third. But I understand this year, we're the first school that's gonna take, take the NAAT test for this group of people that are administering the test for us. They said we're first.
Ninety percent to show, to be able to show.
Right. So that's why we decided we're gonna have a meeting two days beforehand, you know, one, to encourage the kids to do the best and to participate in it, make sure they come to school, so we make sure we have that ninety percent. Anything else? Folks, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. McGage, a couple of updates on, um, Stavord Brown's news.
Microphone you.
A couple of things for, that went on over the, in December, during the Christmas break. Um, we had the gym floor redone, refinished at Carnegie Elementary School. The floor that you guys just visited up there, that was done over the Christmas holiday. The freezer cooler, um, started the, uh, project on a freezer cooler over there, which now is completed. There's just a little bit of trim work left to do on that project. Uh, the temporary coolers have been removed, so that project is, uh, it's just about wrapped up. It went very well, and right on schedule. The company that did the job did an excellent job, a very professional job. We removed the old pit that was there, poured new concrete. First time I've ever seen concrete poured when it's minus five degrees. Uh, it's very interesting. Uh, but they did an excellent job. And that, that cooler freezer is gonna set this, you know, um, be in this district here for a good twenty, twenty-five years without problems. They did a really good job. Uh, our RFP, our Request for Proposal, went out. We had the vendors here on Friday doing a mandatory walkthrough. We had four vendors there. Chlor Company, Constellation Company, uh, Company of Constellation was there, Company B E retrofit was there, and Train also came to the walk, through the mandatory walkthrough. So, um, on fro, on the weekend, and on Monday, and today, there was other people here auditing, doing audits on it, lighting, electricity in our building. So that'll be ongoing process. The RFP, they all have to come back with proposals back on February, I think it's the ninth or the twelfth, I can't remember the date off the top of my head, for the, uh, figures to come back, what they can do for us. So, as that process goes along, I'll keep everyone up to date on what's happening there.
Yes, quick inter, we have the opportunity to choose, I assume we put X number of components in that, we have the opportunity to choose one or all of them at our discretion?
Exactly. It's performance-based contract, whatever we want done, whatever we want to add to that, uh, to that project, we just add it and tell them, "This is what we want to do." We want to do it in stages. We can do some this year, some next year. We can add, you know, whatever we want. I think the, the main components, I think, we need to do is the lighting and the HVAC upgrades in this building. That's the two top priorities, and our switch gears.
The, the first two are energy savers, but that, these switch gears just.
Right. Yeah, the, the, the energy savers are what. Yeah, the energy savers are what we get the bank for a buck to pay for the project, right? That's the whole goal. We definitely need to add that switch gear and the HVAC and then whatever, what other items we can add to it, right? See where we are financially, on the Christmas top project here. So, and then, right now, just working on the capital project budgets for upcoming next school year. Sitting down, seeing what the other buildings need on top of the ESCO project that we're doing. Looking at what else we can do in the building. Had some demos done yesterday with refinishing some of the floors, different coatings. That came up pretty good. I think it's going to be an interesting way to upgrade the bathrooms at Crafton and the walkroom here. I was real impressed with the coating process. They're going to come back with figures now. Just looking at other items. Going to go with the principal, see what's important for them, the upgrades in the building. And just go, you know, build a, start building a capital project budget for next coming school year. Any questions?
Did I see correctly in Bill's summary that some of the spend on facilities does less than what was budgeted? Meaning that.
That's good, then.
I didn't see the report. I didn't see.
Is that your input? So I know we've, we've given you over time the last couple of years, and you put out plans and budgets and asked for X and we've given you Y. And it's always small, a little yes or so. Just at some point, people want to get closer to what you're asking for.
Yeah, I think as we go along, we've got the facilities committee now, you know, that we gather together and look at. I think, you know, very valuable that we all get together, get on the same page, what we need to do here. And our building walkthrough. I don't know, did we have to, did we pick a date yet?
January twenty-seventh.
Okay.
That's, that's annoying, Nancy.
Yeah, hopefully.
Do you mind saying a reminder, email out to everyone?
Yeah, yeah, we'll send a reminder. You know, get, get everybody there, walk through the buildings, take a look. I can point out what I think's important. And then everybody can see like the state of our facilities and what we need to do.
I thought we discussed doing the high school first.
Yeah.
One building at a time.
Because we don't want to overload it. And even if it's bad weather too. So we can do the high school first, point out a lot of the items that are in that ESCO project, you know, what we're going to deal with stuff.
I think one of the things that, you know, Dennis and I had a meeting with Dennis Morelli from Train on Thursday. And, and the RFP meeting was settled on Friday. Do you want to touch base on that a little bit?
Well, the meeting with, with Train was just to go over, you know, they asked us, you know, they wanted to know if we were just asked by what their services are. And we weren't. You know, the reason we put the RFP out there was just to get other, other opinions, other pricing. You know, I thought it was important for the, for the district to see what other options we have. Train may be our best option. They may have the best scope of work. And, you know, and their products may be better than what the other companies offer us. But we don't know that unless we, you know, put the RFP out there to see what's out there. So, and then with the company that showed up, McFour had an RV here, Constellation had an individual here. I think the BE retrofit company, I think they're more, we're building envelope company. They're not going to get into the cannibal. They, I think they came just to tie into the group that's looking at the buildings. They're tying their building envelope process with them. So I, I think it's interesting, you know, the only way we're going to find out, you know, to get the best deal is to, you know, get comparative pricing and comparative scope of works.
Are they giving you, on top of that, are they getting service contracts beyond what they originally set as a contract farm and such?
Yeah, once we get. Yeah, they can get high, right. And that's one of the concerns we had with, you know, with just having Train here. We, you know, because after the process, you're going to be married to that company, right? And so we looked at, you know, is that the best option? So that's why we kind of decided as a committee, let's put a RFP out there, see, see what other companies are out there. And what's nice with a performance contract is we can select our vendors. And if we, you know, instead of being tied with Train for controls, you know, the companies that we already use here. I always feel it's better, you know, to have just one company. Instead of Train controls into high school and buy some services, controls at the elementary school, it's better to have just one company that we're dealing with. So you're right, you know, Train can't get high at times. So that's why we're looking at our best, our best options here.
And I want to thank you, Dennis, and your crew too, because there've been a lot of times, this past weekend being one of them, where we've had power go out, and we've had phones go out. Dennis, your team has been on top of stuff. You guys have been on top of stuff with delays we've had in the past week. And I think you've been lucky in some ways compared to some other areas. You guys are vigilant. And, you know, when I text Dennis at four forty-five or five, and I say, guys are treating the parking lot. The roads at Carnegie aren't bad. And, you know, we go back and forth. So.
Yeah, my staff there has just been really, you know, I mean, great about the snow. We came on Saturday here because we knew if we let it sit longer, there would be a big headache to get it out of here. If they had a crew come out. And they, they just really did a good job and stepped up to the plate with everything. And I'll pass that along because they really have done a good job. We're out here at five today. You know, as you can see, the pesky snows. And I was driving around Carnegie and Crafton, you know, when this was all hitting. And our facility was the best condition out of them all. I will say that. They did a really good job. So I will pass that on to them.
Dennis, even during the Christmas break, Carnegie Elementary School signpost completely caved and curved to grass.
Thank you.
Anything else? One quick point. The next mini-meeting or advisory meeting, the last time we talked about the glass of property, getting that back on the schedule. If it will be possible, do you want to gather some ideas about just a first step to clear the property? Maybe you could bring those options to the next meeting, whether it's a landscaping company or whether it's, I don't know, if we can just invite a local guy who wants to cut trees down that, you know, need for wood and, and do it for free, whatever the option.
Okay, I'll look into, you know, see what we can do to help you clear it out and just, you know, keep that, keep it moving, so.
And so we should probably get a meeting on the schedule that the next couple of weeks.
Yeah, absolutely.
Some of the.
Because they line it up, you know, when the weather breaks, you know, even now, even like in February, some of these companies are slow. You know, they may want to jump on, on some of that work. So.
Absolutely.
Right?
On the ground, bro.
On the ground, bro. Right, because you won't be able to do it with mowers.
As Jim said, Doug's clear out the cliff.
Yeah, don't want to go. Right.
Okay, I want to next ask Ashley Leonard to come up. Ashley, I would thank you for the reception. Who's phenomenal, very good. And, yeah, please take some home.
I'm bringing boxes up. So, good evening. I used to see everybody. Just to go over real quick, December results, year-to-date results. December was a strong month for us, I believe. Beginning part of the school year is always catching up for labor over the summer and opening food costs and stuff like that. So December was a great month that we made up some ground. When we're comparing from last year, our total meals are up twelve seventy-one over last year. And that, that was no small feat. A lot of that was an increase in lunch participation. Income, cash income and reimbursement income is, is up about eight thousand over last year. So meal sales up for December and revenue up for December, which is great. Food costs, you can note that it did come in higher than last year, but I did budget aggressively because I wanted to, I wanted to expand our lunch selection, our options, the quality. And I budgeted monthly to have ninety cent food cost per meal. And we did come in for December at eighty-two cents, so we're even a little below our plan in that respect. Labor cost, payment under plan, which was just being aggressive as much as we could with labor. But, you know, union labor, we almost kind of consider that a fixed cost. It can't be too variable. So indirects, we are down from last year and we're well down from our plan indirects. So most, all variable categories, I was pretty happy with for December. For year-to-date, we are slightly down with meals from last year. And when I dove into our numbers, I wanted to see where the red flags were and where our opportunities were. And breakfast is our opportunity to, to get those numbers back up. Lunch is well over last year as far as participation, but breakfast is that key. So that is what I'm going to hone in on, knowing what that red flag is. I know, okay, this is what we need to work with. So we're gonna, we're, I talked to Mr. Lopren slightly for some plans. I'm going to talk to Lauren. So we're, we're working on breakfast. But it is, it's not going to just go by the wayside. We're going to get right on breakfast. Food cost, again, we are over last year, but we came in right at that ninety percent or ninety cent food cost. And that was our goal, ninety cents per tray. So we're right there. And I really feel like we're seeing that increase in lunch participation due to investing better quality, more variety. Labor costs did come in higher, but just want to note that last year, I'm sure we all recall, a portion of NATE was sent to another district because I was back and forth and I was working for another district as well as filling in here. So that's kind of what increased that for this year compared to last. But all in all, again, slight increase in, in labor and peasers increase. So that all, we kind of feel that a little bit. Direct costs again came in right in line with last year, but still well below our plan. So we're going to keep it there. And all in all, we are seeing a little bit of less profit than last year. But again, we're going to, this is, there's no comparison because the labor was that key piece and it's slightly different. And I'm very confident that we're going to, we're going to come in at our year-to-date plan for revenue or program profit. But that, that ultimately is just a quick recap of the financials. Some action items going on. We have student viewpoint surveys that start this month. So I did budget for us to invest in a Kindle Fire or Apple product as an incentive for the students to participate in the student viewpoint survey. So we're going to get that underway in the next couple of weeks. The students can take that in homeroom. They can use our smartphone. We're going to, we're going to organize it and that incentive is great. So hopefully we'll get a lot of feedback from that student viewpoint survey. And just keep customizing what we do in the program to really, you know, bring what the students want to the table. I had the opportunity to do student advisory meetings at Crafton and here with Ms. Sonny. So we, we had two classes here. And it was great. I got a lot of great feedback from the students. That was able to be incorporated in our December menu and talking with the seventh and eighth graders. It's great to talk to seniors, but I like to hone in on the younger grades. They're going to be with us for four years. You know, so I, they didn't know a few things about the program. For example, they didn't know that our grab and go with uncrustables and salads and sandwiches every day, they thought that they had to pay for that. No, you know, and that word spread so fast. So we just started selling that stuff like crazy. And just, you know, what they would like to see in the menu, what they like, what they dislike, they were very candid. So it was a wonderful opportunity to see what they would like. And we, we have plans to just keep those, keep those going. So ultimately, I think that the program's in a pretty good spot year-to-date and for the month of December. And we're going to keep up that trend. But any questions about the program?
Just a quick piece of feedback. I'm a parent of a couple of kids. And anecdotally, there's kids that are saying they want to buy more often in my house this year than in the last four or five years.
That's what I like to hear.
The numbers seem up. Your approach seems great. So I really appreciate, on a personal level, what I think you're doing. So, thank you.
Thank you. My little girl goes to Carnegie too. So, yeah, we're keeping it in this district, right? But no, thank you so much. That's awesome.
Good, thank you.
Hey. How do you like to go to our two building principals and like Sora Lawrence? Did she have the mic in hand?
She stacked it in. All the fun stuff I already did. So we've received a copy of our newsletter for December, so you'll have that. I just want to do some quick highlights for December and some of the things for January. Some of the events that we had in December, first week of December, we had our Santa shop, which was very successful. Students were very excited for that. PTA actually let any student who wasn't purchasing something, they received one free item from Santa shop. So that was something that was exciting. Our life skills class did coffee shops in Friday, during December on Fridays. So teachers could take orders and our life skills students filled those coffee orders and delivered those to classrooms for our faculty and staff. Santa visited December twenty-second and the students were very excited for that. And we had our holiday parties. We also had our winter band and chorus concerts. A very special thank you to our elementary music department. They were fantastic. They did a great job. And the students seemed very excited to participate. So I was very happy about that. In January, of course, we're coming up to the end of our first semester. So at Carnegie, we have data meetings scheduled to review our first semester, some of the things that we're doing in our intervention period, how we're going to move forward and what we need to do to change that so that we make sure that we're using data to drive our decision-making and, you know, growth within our students, especially our students, our enrichment students. That's definitely a focus for our second semester. Some things that we're planning, of course, our report card distribution will be January twenty-third. We have our talent show for Carnegie Elementary on January twenty-sixth, which is sponsored by our PTA. January twenty-ninth is our one-hundredth day of school celebration. So we are planning things to participate in that special day. And our biggest event in January is going to happen on January thirtieth. We are proud to announce that we are adopting a school from the Educational Partnership. So. Each one of our Carnegie students is going to receive a power tools homework kit. So every child in Carnegie Elementary will receive this kit. We were sponsored by Carnegie Rotary, Crafton Ingram Rotary, and McKnight Elementary in the North Allegheny School District. That would be where Ms. Carla Hudson is now the assistant principal in that building. So she has, she will be coming January thirtieth to help with the distribution of our, our kits. So we're really excited for that assembly on the thirtieth. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
And of course, Ms. Catuso.
Good evening. I'm, I'm going to start off with what Mike had talked a little bit about upstairs regarding the PNC Consortium. Because it's, it's actually something pretty exciting that's going to affect our twelfth graders this year, but our eleventh and twelfth graders next year. And hopefully we'll, we'll build into a partnership that will carry us many years from now. The consortium is made up of the Allegheny Consortium, PNC Bank, UPMC, and FedEx. And from, from what they explained to us in a meeting that we held last Thursday was that this, this partnership was created as these businesses recognized, as Mr. Lopren said, that there was a labor shortage. But also because we have these two extreme group of, groups of students. We have the ones that are being pushed to go to college. And then we have on the other end, students who are going into VOTECs or are in special education and therefore receive OVR services. We have this group in the middle that are just kind of lost. They may not be college-bound, but they may not be being pushed into those trades or get those OVR services. And so what do we do with the ones in the middle? So over the past couple of years, they said that they have been going to career fairs and, and college fairs to try to get college students. But now they're looking at, why aren't we tapping into this workforce that is going to be coming right out of high school? So what they'll be doing over the next semester is they will come in four times during the year. And it's, it's kind of a, a two-way street. They will bring in workplace volunteers to work with a group of, I believe they're looking at twenty to thirty students in our school. And we are one of five pilot schools. So it's Carlington, Steel Valley, Woodland Hills, Elizabeth Ford, and I apologize, there is one more and I, I forget who that is. So we are one of five schools where they will be selecting twenty to thirty students. They will come in and they will work on a variety of things with our students. Interview skills, soft skills, problem solving, critical thinking, collaboration. And, and they're still trying to get ideas as to how they want to roll these things out to our students. But then on the flip side of that, they will also pair up with teachers in our district. And those teachers will take groups out to these different workplaces to see these skills in action. And then hopefully, these will turn into internships that will hopefully turn into possible job opportunities. With the idea that these are companies that you're not necessarily stuck in one spot in this company. There is room to grow. There is room to receive benefits. There is room to receive continuing training and working up. training and working up into higher level management, the idea that this could become a career and not just a job. So we're very excited to have this partnership with them and to see what this looks like, not just in the first semester, but over the course of the next couple of years. So that's just a little bit about that. Our second semester began today, so we are now starting the third nine weeks. The student detail report will be ready for this report card, yes. So what's gonna happen is in the report card mailing will be a letter with the parents' login and password credentials for their students, and Mr. Riddell was able to get it all linked up so that it's one login per family, and all the students will be linked in with that family. And so the instructions will be included in there, as well as posted on the website, and then starting on Monday, when the report cards go out, families will be able to log into this portal and see second quarter student detail report. One of the things that we did discover today that I wanted to mention, that we are already working on, is that midterm grade, the, the actual midterm exam grade, will not be available on there. We just realized that it's not even an option in the menu whenever generating that report. So Joe has already put a ticket in to e-schools to see if we can get that put on at least for the final exam, and maybe even have it pop up retroactively in, in the other reports. So that will be available for the second nine weeks and for all other interim progress reports and report cards moving forward. Just a couple of other things going on over the past month and upcoming. A lot of athletics going on right now, and Mr. Millsom just texted me and wanted me to let you know that the boys and girls swim teams just both beat Mars, so way to go swim team, yes. JV and varsity boys' basketball is actually here tonight, and there's a wrestling match tomorrow. The day right before break, we had a variety show, which included a number of different skits and talents from our students and from our teachers, and Santa did make an appearance at that variety show as well. We also had two holiday concerts right before break, but another music event that will be coming up on January 23rd, the high school will be hosting WACA, it's the Western Allegheny County Area Honors Band, and that is for high school students, and that is an honors band that is made up of students from Cornell, Stow Rock, Shart Valley, South Fayette, Montour, us, Moon, Quaker Valley, West Day, thank you. So all of those students will be coming over the course of two days, and they will put on a concert at the end of, on the night of the 23rd, and it's a pretty, pretty exciting and pretty fun event for, for all students involved. So again, that'll be January 23rd. February 7th will be eighth grade parent night, so that'll be a night for the eighth grade parents to come up and hear about what high school scheduling will look like. They'll go over, Steph Barnes will go over credits and graduation requirements and whatnot with those parents and those students. February 13th will be NAHS and NJHS induction, and then I just wanted to mention, we actually have two new clubs that are getting started this semester. One of them, again, was mentioned upstairs, I think, by Mrs. Beck, and it will either be FBLA, Future Business Leaders of America, or DECA. Brittany Nacera has, she's our new business tech teacher, and she has expressed interest in starting one of those clubs, and knowing that we have the focus being mentoring and entrepreneurship upstairs, she thought that would work great with creating that type of club here, and, you know, trying to see what they can do in partnership with what's going on in the shop. The other club was suggested by Senor Vianos and his wife, Mrs. Vianos, and Jessica Bartholomew, who's our ESL teacher up here at the high school, and also in partnership with Trish Sertie. They were noticing that a lot of our ESL students are still having trouble, kind of getting acclimated to the, the social side of being in not only a new district, but a new state, a new country. And so what their plan is, is to create almost this bridge club where we will bring in students that are native to Carlington to kind of pair up with these ESL students to talk about some of the things culturally that, you know, maybe the ESL students are finding trouble with, and to try to help work them through some of those experiences, so that they feel like they have somebody here to talk to, to kinda help them, a student to kinda help them through those things, because that's one of the things that our ESL students have had the biggest struggle with. Mrs. Bartholomew mentioned this club to her ESL students, and they were very excited. So you'll actually see signs in the, in the cafeteria doors and walking out, so it's already being advertised, so we're hoping to get that started sometime in February for our ESL students, so.
Do you have mentors, other student mentors signed up or ready to help or volunteer?
I, that I don't know yet. Those have been up for a little while, so I imagine, I imagine that we do, and Senor had reached out to a pair of students who have been here for a while. One of them actually just did that EIC presentation, Simon Majed, and so they have been here for a while and very successfully acclimated, so they're hoping to kind of use them to recruit other students in, in the high school to help with that. Thank you.
Just a question before you go.
Yes.
The eighth grade parent night, how do we let the parents know about that? How do you, are we gonna inform them?
From what I understand, Steph is, is sending letters home very shortly to inform them, but obviously we'll also put it up on our website.
Excellent.
Hey, I just wanna thank you, Rachel. I know you've been taking a lot of the lead point along with Joe Riddell to get the school detail report out and, and, you know, serving as a discussion point with e-schools, so I wanna thank you for stepping up to the plate to do that, and I think you and Joe working together is gonna make a big difference, and, you know, thank you for going beyond what you would have had to do.
Thank you.
And on that point, knowing that, because of conditions that were outside of your control and others' controls, the, the rollout of stuff at the beginning of the year wasn't necessarily perfect, and knowing that parents had an experience that maybe wasn't perfect. If there's any way, not on your back, but on our collective backs, that we can test things in advance and try running a couple of reports and have us audit it and double and triple check before we send that stuff out. If this launch can be seamless, that would be, that'd be huge.
That's definitely what we're hoping, and we've had Angie Zanone, knowing that she has a daughter in the district, already testing it out to make sure that it's popping up in the right place, that she sees what she wants to see, you know, and, and like I said, we already recognized this issue with the midterm exam, so hopefully moving forward, the teachers have already been trained in how to run the report and everything, so I'm hoping. Cross your fingers.
Okay, thank you.
That concludes our administrative reports. Now we go to committee reports.
All right, Director Appley, anything on Parkway you wanna share?
We had our January meeting last week, and you'll see in the finance section here as a budget item, or as an item, we'll be voting to approve the joint, jointure budget.
Can you just briefly share for our new director that why we have to approve the Parkway budget?
Well, what we, what we do is, we share, there's 12 schools involved in the Parkway West Career and Technical Center, and based on how much, what is it?
It's based on our average daily membership.
Average daily membership.
As a whole.
Right.
Yeah, not just, it goes to the school.
So, so, so all the 12 schools pay a proportion of Parkway's overall budget. For us, it's always a bargain because we pay a little bit less because we don't send as many kids there.
Our, our population is lower than our participation.
That's exactly, yeah. And so that, that's on there, and I would just, would you say that as Dr. Foulton likes to point out, the Parkway West is the lowest cost per pupil of all the CTCs in the area and the highest participation. So it's over, you know, kids that go there now, and, and beyond that, I wish I would have brought my notes with me, but our kids are doing very well. We have listed the first, first, first period honor roll, and we had a number of our students that made that first, that's all I have.
One, one additional note, your, your passion for Parkway, I think, ties in with the Allegheny Consortium comments that were shared about the, the need for skilled labor.
Well, I, yeah, and, and I'm actually very familiar with the, the Allegheny Consortium, and, and, you know, I, the, through my own work, and I've had conversations with the, with the folks from UPMC and from FedEx, or not FedEx, UPMC and PNC, and, you know, they're very serious about not only being, you know, giving back meaning, but they are, they're looking forward to getting people in their systems and, and, you know, employed, who, you know, they, they wanna get the people early so they can, you know, have their pick of very highly qualified candidates to fill out their jobs, you know, I mean, UPMC is the largest player in the region, and PNC's a powerhouse too, so definitely a great, great thing, and I'm so glad to participate.
Is there any connection we can make with Parkway and our new creative lab upstairs? Is there?
We had actually talked about using the, oh my gosh, the student bricklayers, masonry students to build, there, there was a corner, right, in the right-hand corner that they wanna make into actually like a teacher area where they can come in and make copies, do lamination, a, a number of things, they wanted to build a glass wall, they're using glass cubes, and they were hoping to partner with Parkway, have those students come in and build that wall.
Great.
On the other side, you too, we have a big connection up there, because Dr. Fire was the superintendent of record, so, yeah.
Thank you. Director Hanshaw, I think, is there on Pathfinder?
I was just appointed as our Carlington president this month, and I'm meeting this tomorrow, so apparently I'm always gonna be on a flight.
Okay, that's all right. Thank you for, for starting that role. Director Dugan is not able to be here tonight. Director Simsek, any legislative PSBA news?
I just wanna talk a little bit about CHIP because I know it's a concern with the funding possibly running out soon. I reached out to Lena Hanna, who's a PSBA advocacy person, so she was able to send me a lot of information. One of the things I had asked her about was, you know, if other districts have a plan for, in particular, there's student athletes who might be losing their insurance, so she had some, she had a recommendation from another superintendent saying there are free clinics and possibly the Board of Health that could help people who find themselves in a bind if CHIP should run out.
Do we have a date or roughly when that's gonna expire?
January 19th, well, January 19th is when funding might, so that's kinda soon. Yeah, Pennsylvania, they're looking at, I think, March.
March 31st.
Yeah, yeah.
So we'll cross our fingers that gets resolved.
Right.
Thank you.
Hey, I just, I just wanna add one more thing with Shasta. January 25th, on Thursday, there's legislative sessions that can be placed down there for board members. Those sessions are pretty good, there's two lawyers from our vice's office talking at wealth of issues, including economic referrals, so all board members are welcome to attend. I'm going, I believe Director Dugan's going as well, but it's nice, you know, I think it's starting, last month started at five, Upper Sinclair rides nice there, and it was pretty well received and fast, so that's, it'll be Thursday 25th.
And what location?
Upper Sinclair. We also have, I sent a thing out to Rachel Catuso, Mike Lachlan, the student, Shasta Spring Student Conference will be April 28th, South Point, and we're already starting to think of two students to name who've overcome some challenges and been able to persevere and succeed, and, you know, they wanna get those names before, I thought she said, February 23rd, so that's not gonna be a lot of time, so we're gonna look to who's gonna be a good student that would be worthy of that. So, so thanks.
Moving on to the miscellaneous section of our agenda, I'll entertain a motion to approve the additions to the 2017-2018 conference and field trip requests as submitted, and number two, to reschedule the June 2018 meeting dates to June 18th for the executive session and June 25th as the public voting meeting, and to advertise those meetings accordingly.
Do we wanna add on the new, for the April, I'm sorry, February 20th meeting, February 19th as well in that motion?
So let's add to that one of those dates.
Well, the original calendar, because we're gonna have all for President's Day, had the board meeting on Tuesday, February 20th, however, was passed in session on Monday to 19th, there is a desire to have the meeting also on Monday to 19th.
Okay, so we're gonna reschedule the eight, the February and June meetings, and the new meeting dates are the 18th and 25th in June and the 19th in February.
And to correct.
And to advertise. And to advertise those.
Oh, and then also that meeting to have a, a special meeting on the 19th.
Doesn't that date would have to be the, the February 12th?
Uh, for the executive session on the 12th.
After your, after your executive session for the full, uh, budget off.
So we're gonna need to have a new public meeting on the 12th.
So that'll be a special meeting for general purposes.
Should I give that a motion?
No, you can do that. That, that's obviously a date that's already scheduled, just for clarity on the, the agenda, what time do you wanna advertise that meeting?
The 12th. If we have our executive session at six, who are making eight?
I'm gonna suggest you make it seven, and then if we can go in and out, then we have the advertising.
Shouldn't go in and out.
All right, seven, fourth, any problems?
Sun's going.
We'll be here anyway, so, okay.
Is it breaking?
Yes, yes, okay. Seven PM, so that's more for Michelle, not for the motion necessarily.
Well, it'd be in the motion and in the advertising, she has to advertise it. We, we know that the 20th will be the same, the 19th will be the same time as the 20th.
There you go. The 12th, there's enough on the 20th.
You're moving the meeting on the 20th to the 19th.
Correct.
That'll be at the same time as the 20th, so seven o'clock, she'll advertise it, seven o'clock on the 19th, so just change the date. But there is no time set for the special meeting, so we're adding that to the 20th.
Understood, okay.
We still make a motion. Nobody can do the justice.
Right, right, we need to, so does everybody understand what we're, we're asking? The 19th, the 12th of, of February, and then the 18th and 25th of the June. Good, okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve that.
So moved.
So moved, all right. Moved and seconded, any discussion? If not, we'll vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. All right, June 18th, June 25th, February 12th, February 19th. Under Section 2 Finance, I'll entertain a motion to approve, number one, May 2017 Treasures Report as submitted, number two, the June 2017 Treasures Report as submitted, number three, the September 2017 Bills in the amount of $539,976.54. Number four, the October 2017 Bills in the amount of $959,484.67. Number five, the November 2017 Bills in the amount of $729,619.61. Number six, December 2017 Bills in the amount of $422,057.21. The November 2017 Athletic Fund Report with a net balance of $3,392.47. Number eight, the November 2017 Activities Fund Report with a net balance of $70,872.36. Number nine, the 2018-2019 General Operating Budget as submitted by Parkway West Career Technology Center in the amount of $6,428,563, with a jointure budget of $703,183. The Carlington School District. The Carlington School District's contribution to the general operating budget is $376,521.2 contribution of $27,422.75 to the jointure budget. Number 10, the December 2017 Food Service Report is submitted by Airmark Education Services. Number 11, Engaged Public Finance Management as financial advisors for proposed capital projects, providing financing options for proposed capital projects. Number 12, review the four-year, sorry, let me slow down. Number 12, renew the four-year agreement with Jordan Tax Services for the collection of real estate taxes to the boroughs of Crafton and Roseland Farms. And last but not least, number 13, the Homestead-Farmstead refund to a Carnegie resident in the amount of $178.04 due to an Allegheny County error. Let me pause there and ask for a motion for those 13 items. So moved on a second.
Second.
Moved in second. If you have a question, just raise it by, by item number.
I do have a question on number nine. Why is there a general operating budget and a jointure budget for Parkway?
What, they do like the overall budget, and then the jointure is based on these different schools and how they give that out.
But we pay.
We're paying, I think, $376,000, and then we pay as part of the operating, we pay for the jointure as well. And we get some of that back, you know, because we always pay and then they give us a refund.
Why is there a refund?
I think they're required by how they're set up, by how the jointure is set up by law. Plus, I think one of the things through George is, if you look, there's a clause in there because they're doing an HBC project, and we're contributing $7,000 towards that, and each district contributes.
Any other questions on that motion? I have a question. So Bill, any reason that we're seeing the May and June 2017 ones?
Yes, I had to tie it back into things that have to straighten out if they can't stretch the association, close out the records for the audit, and I couldn't get it. I had to get it rolling together, that's the reason it's back there.
Okay. And then the bills, camera, October, November?
Just getting all caught up with them because I have to spend the most, just getting the records closed out for last year for November to December.
Okay.
So it got caught up.
Sounds good. All right, thank you. Can you, Bill, can you talk about number 11? The public finance management.
Right. The, the purpose of the public financial management recommendation on my part is, they are not, they don't sell debt, they don't, what they do is provide services, recommend the best way to structure debt, they'll give you options. And one of the things they want to look at at this point in time, and this is Dodd-Frank and I want to do a little more disclosure as a financial advisor, as a true financial advisor, so they don't care who you take your debt out with, they'll just run the options with the best service schedule, play with it, that's as straightforward as it may be. So it's looking at getting the borrowing money for the cheapest cost.
So they're not a broker?
No.
Do they just charge a flat rate, or do they have an hourly rate, or what do they?
They would charge a fee depending upon what is your type of debt structure. One of the things we're looking at here, and since the capital projects that were put together a month ago by a trade and what the RFP is based on, was the amount of money was nine million some dollars, you could get everything that you selected in. That makes it perfectly bank qualified, ten million dollars unless you consider it bank qualified underneath the federal tax code. And there are advantages to doing something that's bank qualified because you get cheaper costs for issuing the debt and consequently, you have to pay interest rates. So that's, that's the whole purpose, is just to look at options. The only time you incur a fee is when you decide to go and actually get the debt. And so let's say if you were to actually have what would be a typical fee for a bank qualified debt unless you borrow another $70,000, it would be in the 20, 25, $30,000 range. It's their fee they would charge for doing all the bidding and going out. And again, depending on how you want to do it, you could do it in a different place, or you could do it in a tighter bid, or.
Sure.
Or in a way going out of debt. So they would give you all those options, and that would be where the fee would fall in.
And so.
So fees is for them to run the best service schedule, study how much it's going to cost to borrow, let's say a million dollars, and then, and then they'll give you the amortization schedule over 10, 15, 20, 25 years, so.
This, this doesn't commit us to a specific dollar amount to pay them?
No, you're not committed to any dollar amount to inside to borrow money. This is just to get the approval. Again, they never required this. I never had to go through this process before it was actually a debt issue. But according to Dodd-Frank and that nominee for this SEC requires they have to actually get this disclosed to us, and then I think you have the package in about six or eight days that I gave it to. But if we take it, so, but actually, we're pretty similar with that process. Please go ahead.
Anyone else have any questions? Quick question, sorry. Jordan's Tax Services is helping us collect for Crafton and Roseland Farms. Let's.
I keep giving the answer to that.
Yeah.
I don't think what's been done in the past four years. The, the, you know, you're Robin Farms is the person who's actually doing the tax collecting with such a name, but the act of collecting was being done by Jordan Tax Service. And since this is a new four-year term, it will be elected or appointed official, that's why they're looking at four-year term. The same situation is true with Crafton. One of the employees is appointed as the tax collector in their name, and then chief, in this case, the chief, deputizes the Jordan Tax Collector to take care of the tax collection. That's the, that's the situation that happens within the past four years. And you may be looking at a very similar situation in, in Carney, you only be blessed to be doing the many collecting positions, it's not only a K5 with the staff here at this point.
Okay.
So that's the case, but you have to do it year by year because it's going to come up and bond in the manner that he's the person that has to report with it for this point in time, file for bankruptcy.
Thank you. And I'll ask this, in case anyone have any other questions? No? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Under Section 3 Personnel, there are eight items. I'll entertain a motion to approve number one, the addition to the 2017-2018 day-to-day substitute list as presented. Number two, the additions to the 2017-2018 supplemental athletic lists as presented. Number three, employ Kimberly Holdcroft for the position of Assistant Director of Finance and Budget, a 12-month position under Act 93, at a salary of $37,000, effective January 8th, 2018, subject to a 60-day probationary period. Number four. Thank you very much. Number four, employ panel steward for the position of cafeteria worker at the junior senior high school under the terms of the SCA Collective Baring Unit Agreement. Number five, the addition to the 2017-2018 day-to-day substitute custodian list as presented. Number six, the resignation of Tony Lynn Jackson as SAT English instructor for the SAT preparatory class offered in the spring of 2018, and the posting for the open position. Number seven, the proposal for the 2018 Carlington Academic Summer Program to be offered June 11th through June, sorry, June 11th through July 6th, 2018, from 8:30 AM to 11:30 AM for students in grade four to 12 with an IBP who require supported reading, writing, and math, and to post for three special education teachers who will be compensated at the per diem rate. Finally, number eight, the letter of intent to retire from high school teacher William Harris as submitted per the terms of the SFT Collective Baring Unit Agreement and effective on the last day of 2017-2018 school year. Do I have a motion for those eight items? Got a second?
Second.
Move in second. Any discussion or questions? Just a clarification, Dr. Piper's the late letter of intent to retire is not binding and is just signaling.
That, that's correct. By the contract, they, they still have time to withdraw that.
Okay. So people who, who have kids that have loved Phil Harris's class at times, they try to convince him not to retire, right? Any other questions? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Section 4 Policy, there are four items there. I'll entertain a motion to approve the following. Number one, the second and final reading of Attachment 3 to Policy 227, the Carlington School District Summary of Drug and Alcohol Administrative Guidelines. Number two, the second and final reading of Policies 314 dot 1 through 325 as presented. Number three, the first reading of Policy 622, GASP statement 34 as presented. And number four, the first reading of Policy 201, Admission of Students as revised. Do I have a motion for those four items?
So moved.
Moved on a second? Moved in second. Any discussion? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Under Section 5, we have two items, student matters. I'll entertain a motion to approve number one, the education in the matter of student number SM1718-01 as presented. And number two, the adjudication in the matter of student SM1718-02 as presented. Do I have a motion for those two items?
So moved.
Moved on a second?
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Not, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Under Old Business, do any director have any old business for the board? No? Any director of any new business they'd like to bring up?
We, we'd just like, again, to present the board with certificates recognizing your service and thank everybody. President Schrock.
If we do it for the pay, Dr. Piper?
Yes.
And the glory.
delay tomorrow because of a minus swell wind chill, so.
Have you been looking out the window?
I'm having a bit of a crazy.
I've been looking up for that all day.
I'm sorry, Dr. Pfeffer.
Just struck me as funny, I can't.
Any other director of any new business they want to bring up? If not, we'll move to open forum. Any member of the audience have any open forum items they'd like to share?
Tyler?
Tyler?
Nope.
Nothing? Board members open up open forum items? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Got a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?